We will now convene our city council study session for the morning of May the 28th. Again, I note that our, all of our council members are present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review and discuss items on the agenda for the June 1st, 2020 regular council meeting. Council, if you don't mind, I'll just begin because I note I have a couple of things I'd like to point out on this agenda. Beginning with Agenda Item 3A, I'm proud to see that we are reappointing one of our great city magistrates, Judge Lawler. I've heard a lot of praise about Judge Lawler and just want to congratulate her and thank the Judicial Advisory Board for the good work that they do in helping us to appoint and evaluate our judges. Also, I think we all know that this is a very important time in our municipal court right now. We are just about a month away from the retirement of Judge DeFoye, who for many years has been our presiding magistrate, had a very successful career, and I hope that at some point we'll get the opportunity to have some sort of an event to honor Judge DeFoye and recognize all that he's done for our community. Our beautiful state-of-the-art court building was built under his direction. Mesa is really a national leader in adopting specialty courts such as our special court and our community court, and that has been done under Judge DeFoye's guidance and leadership. So, we're appreciative for the good work that he has done. Agenda Item 5A on Monday is an ordinance that clarifies the role of the presiding magistrate and how that office is built. Our city charter and the ordinance dealing with magistrates is, really didn't address a lot of the details of that or offer much guidance going forward.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
6A, 6A is the one you were...
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say, I said 5A, didn't I?
Yeah.
So, Agenda Item 6A has to do with a proposed ordinance that will clarify the role of the presiding magistrate. Mr. Smith, could you, I appreciate the work that you've done on that ordinance. Could you maybe give the council and myself a little explanation as to what that ordinance is doing?
Sure, Mayor and Council, thank you. And let me first, I want to echo what you had said about Judge DeFoye, an incredibly successful career. The specialty courts that he's created under his tenure, including the rural loving court, bringing into municipal court, the veterans' court, and the community court, all award-winning courts and really templates for other communities. And so, incredibly successful career. The ordinance that's before you, the interesting thing about the city code is it actually doesn't reference a presiding magistrate. And so, what we've done is we've specifically put in the position of presiding magistrate and the specificity of as far as terms and making it the same as other magistrates. And then also providing the process for appointing the magistrate, presiding magistrate, and giving council the flexibility and the ability to either go through the judicial advisory board process for appointing the next magistrate, or if council chose, it could do an internal recruitment of the current magistrates who obviously all have gone through that process and that vetting process. And so, on, so that ordinance is for introduction on Monday, and also on Monday you'll see on the study session, we'll have an agenda item to ask council for direction as to whether council would like to go through the judicial advisory board process or go through an internal recruitment process. There's obviously other possible variations of that, but really, they come down to either one of those two variations or a modification of those variations. And so, we'll just ask for direction from council on that on Monday.
All right. Thank you. Council, any questions regarding Agenda Item 6A or 3A that we just discussed? I do have another question. I note that, again, there's several interesting items on this agenda. 5A is authorizing our city manager under the extraordinary circumstances that we're in with the COVID response and trying to be nimble and allowing the city manager to do some things to make life easier for some of our small businesses, particularly restaurants that might need some leeway with negotiating, you know, and navigating all the city regulations that might be impediments to, you know, small businesses being successful in the situation we're in now. Mr. Smith or Mr. Brady, can you enlighten us a little bit as to what the good will come from Agenda Item 5A?
Yeah, Mayor, and I'll comment on it a little bit. And the concept is this, and I'll give it by way of example, is that a number of restaurants have indicated that they would like to extend a patio out or have a patio seating and the ability to do that, and also to do it under an expedited process. And I think the word nimble is a good word, Mayor, is that unfortunately, sometimes the city code is not as nimble as you would like to be, especially in these type of situations. And so, the idea is to provide that type of ability to make those, what are seemingly small modifications, but that have implications on a couple of different areas of the city code. And so, the idea is to simplify that process. And the idea is we're bringing a resolution to you now to enable that process, and it will also probably bring you an ordinance within the next month to also just further provide that this process can occur in the future, either if there's, you know, other issues during this pandemic or also in the future if there's ever another emergency, so that the city can be more nimble in responding in emergency situations.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any questions on that item? Again, I think, yes, Councilmember Duff.
Well, I really don't want to have a question, but I just want to say thank you for responding to the needs of the businesses. This is something that is occurring nationwide as cities look at how they can be more accommodating to businesses operating, especially restaurants, in the best capacity they can. Reduced interior, a lot of people feel more comfortable outside because of the fresh air, and allows them to try to get to business as normal, as much as they can, in a new way. And I appreciate the city's efforts in recognizing that and taking this action. So, thank you.
Thank you. Amen to that. If you don't mind, I'll just keep, I also have, would like to point out Agenda Item 5H. I'm anxious just to hear a little more about it. My take on this is that because of the growth of the city, Mr. Brady, that even though the tax levy remains the same in terms of our debt service on our bonds, that because of the growth that the city's experienced, that they were able to actually lower the tax rate for our secondary property tax fairly significantly.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have Ryan Wimmer, our city treasurer, just speak to that real quickly. Ryan, just kind of, you can just respond to the mayor's question there.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. My name is Ryan Wimmer. I'm the city treasurer. Looking at the property tax, the secondary property tax levy for next year, you're right, Mayor. And I'll bring up a table here where, as is customary, the secondary property tax levy is generally set after each bond, general obligation bond authorization election. So, that happened in 2018. And last year, the $41.7 million levy was levied for the current year. We're in fiscal year 1920. So, next year's proposed levy, which is on the agenda for Monday, keeps that levy flat at $41.7 million. But as you mentioned, Mayor, due to growth in both the values of existing property and the construction of new property, the rate is declining. You can see here on the second row from $1.18 to $1.11, which is a 6% decrease. Now, the impact of the median homeowner, so the typical Mesa residential resident, is, it stays the same because the value of the homes goes up, but the rate goes down. And so, there's really a, it's a wash. But it's nice to be able to reduce that rate because of the increase in property values in the city.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I, yeah, I'm glad we could point that out, that the growth is having a good benefit in some ways around the city. I think I noted a week ago that the census estimates for last year put us at 519,000 people, which is a significant increase. So, this is one of the, I think sometimes we debate, is growth a good thing, a bad thing, a neutral thing, but it's good to see some good coming from that. Council, any other questions on that agenda item? Okay, finally, the one other agenda item that I just wanted to point out or highlight was 7D. This is, again, something we've talked about in the past, but this is actually taking the legal steps to lower our residential water utility charges for low-income senior residents by 30%. Just want to, again, thank staff and council for taking on the social responsibility of being a utility provider and doing what we need to do to, particularly in hot summer months and for our low-income utility customers, to do everything we can to make those essential services affordable. So, just want to express my appreciation to staff and council for taking that step. Okay, Council, other questions regarding our agenda for Monday? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I would like to, on Item 4A, Agenda Item 4A, I'd just like to commend Parks and Rec for reuse of the light poles. I noticed in their presentation that they were using some of the poles and lighting that was left over from Riverview. And so, that's a, creates a big tax savings for our citizens. The other, I had an issue with, I think it was 7, 7A, on the ordinance for the transact zones, for the, for the form-based code. I'm not sure I 100% agree with this. And the reason I say that is because with form-based code, and what we've been trying to accomplish, Mayor, for many, many years, is to really bring that true mixed use to our downtown, which is, you know, where we predominantly have the residential above-ground floor, and then their ground floor is reserved for retail and office. This is kind of a, taking us backwards, it seems, by allowing up to 50% of the ground floor to be utilized for residential. And so, that, to me, that goes backwards in where we've been trying to go with form-based code, especially in our downtown area. And so, I'm not overly sure that that's where, that I like 7A, that I want to change our ordinance to allow up to 50% of residential on the ground floor. Now, it does say that, that it is with the expectation that when the market is correct or when the market's right, that it'll shift to office or retail. But I think once you have residential built, it's going to be hard to push the residential out to replace it with retail or office space. And so, I'm not sure that I like Item 7A. I would like, if we could, to maybe table that and have further discussions with our P&amp;Z group and see if we can come up with some other option.
So, Mayor, Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
I think this is a direct response to a large development here in downtown and trying to work with them on such a very large piece, a massive property that's being developed. What I would suggest is to have Mr. McVeigh visit with Councilmember Thompson between now and Monday, and then maybe have Mr. McVeigh available on Monday study session to explain how this is really trying to accommodate the needs of a very large expansive development to make it work for them and for us to get that development off the road. So...
Well, could we do that, could we accomplish the same thing with a council approval or a council use permit per se versus changing the entire ordinance? Because once, I think, you open that Pandora's box to other developers, I mean, once it's out there as an ordinance or form-based code downtown, now every developer is going to want to bill up to 50% of their ground floor as residential. And that's, to me, that's just not where we've been wanting to go over the last, since I've been on council, talking about form-based code. We've always been pushing for more of the retail, you know, retail and office on the bottom floor and pushing all the residential upward. And that's what we talked about with Chicanas or La Casa. That's what we've talked about with a lot of other developers. And now, it seems like we're going backwards, and I would rather have a council use permit in place than changing or amending our zoning ordinances to allow us or allow developers. Again, you're opening Pandora's box, I think, and so I would rather just do it on a one-by-one basis with a council use permit versus changing our ordinance altogether.
So, Mayor and Council, we can, again, we can have Jeff explain this. I think the difference here is the size of this development and the reality that the length of the development and the amount of retail that we would be requiring under this development is almost equal to what is a significant portion of what already exists in downtown, and the absorption of that kind of retail from a market standpoint doesn't seem to be realistic in this case. And I think it's more to be because of the size and mass of this property specifically than the principle that you're suggesting, which I think we all agree with. I think this has to do with the development size and the mass and how much retail this would be in one specific location because it's such a large property. I think that's what's being discussed. But why don't we try to address this on Monday and see if we can answer those questions? If not, then we can delay it after Monday.
I've got a question on this. Which property is it that we're referring? I thought this was citywide. I don't see a specific property in the notes.
Well, it'd only be, it'd have to be specifically, as it says, T-5 Main Street, T-5 MS Zone. So, that's a pretty specific area.
And the only areas really where we're using form-based codes, East Mark and downtown, correct?
Yeah, that's prob, I think that's generally correct. Most, this is a, the T-5 Main Street would speak specifically to the Brown and, what used to be the Brown and Brown car dealership, so that entire, that block. So, if you can imagine that block, if you're going to have development along that entire block, and if we're requiring that entire length be retail, I think that's what the developer's struggling with, is the reality of having that much retail and that one location on, for that length is not, there's not a, an example of where that's sustainable, and even considering the vacancy rates in existing parts of downtown. So, he's just looking to have, create some more diversity of use.
All right. Well, I agree with the points that Mr. Thompson's made, and I agree with the real-life application of the situation on a, literally a city block that Mr. Brady's pointed out. So, yeah, I'd appreciate Mr. McVeigh talking to Mr. Thompson with about his concerns and I think we want to accomplish the development, but those are legitimate concerns. I know they've raised it with us in the past about the viability of creating that much retail. Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, I'd like to hear both sides of it. Is there a possibility to weigh in on the special use permit or council use permit and see, you know, specifically for a developer or specific parcel? So, I'd like to hear, you know, probably two or three different points of view on it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Duff?
On that point, I'd also like to look at how developments, even in Tempe, I've heard of problems with developments being able to fill those spaces. There's a demand for housing, but there's an oversaturation of office and retail along the arterials right now, and especially in economic conditions. So, I'd like to know if this is a model that has been working anywhere for this type of zoning within the form-based code in our current economy of the last couple of years to current. Or maybe it's not an issue at all. I know at some time, it was a problem in Tempe and being, and we had another development out in Mesa that had a problem getting the financing with those restrictions as well. So, I'd like to have a broader perspective. Thank you.
Mr. Luna?
Mayor, as you know, that we've been trying to develop a property for years. It's been very controversial, as you know, and I'd like to see what the developer is actually intending to do in that area and that they, that perhaps may change our minds. I understand where Mr. Thompson has coming, is coming from. For over the years, we have worked on ensuring that we follow, you know, we adhere to form-based codes as we've developed in the downtown area, but we may have put this developer in a predicament. So, let's hear what they have to say before we move forward on that. So, again, we've been working on this development for many, many years, and we want to make sure that we're doing it right.
Amen to that. So, I know there'll be a lot of conversation, I think, between now and Monday when we vote on this, and perhaps tentatively, we ought to plan on hearing from Mr. McVeigh on Monday, Mr. Brady, unless everyone's questions are resolved before then. But this is an item that the public is obviously very interested in as well. That's a, that's really a focal point of our downtown, and so, maybe we learn more about this on Monday. Mr. McVeigh can give us a little presentation on why city staff and why the planning and zoning board has recommended this change.
We'll do that.
All right. Thank you. Council, other questions regarding our Monday agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next agenda item for this study session, which is Item 2A. That's to hear a presentation and provide direction on reallocation of $600,000 of fiscal year 2019-20 community development block grant, also known as CDBG funding, and amending fiscal year 2019-20 annual action plan. Mr. Brady?
Sorry, getting used to this new switch. Thank you, Mayor. Well, we're going to have a presentation by Mary and Michelle. We're coming back to council also. I'm encouraged to the questions about additional assistance the city could provide for rental assistance, and so that'll be included in this presentation also.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. With me today is Mary Brandon, Housing Deputy Director, who has been instrumental in preparing the information we present before you today. Today, we will be providing a brief summary of funding that has been presented to and approved by city council over the past two months and upcoming agenda items that will come before you for final consideration. We will also be seeking input from mayor and council to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the reallocation of $600,000 of fiscal year 2019-20 community development block grant funding and amending the fiscal year 1920 annual action plan. On April 23rd, staff presented the annual funding recommendations for fiscal year 2020-21 for the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grant. These funds are allocated on an annual basis to nonprofit organizations to provide programs and services in the community. City council approved over $8 million for these vital services. In addition to the annual funding, the city was allocated funding from the CARES Act in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. On April 30th, city council reviewed and approved over $1 million in ESG COVID, or which we refer to as ESG-CV funding, for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, as well as the city's annual allocation of human services dollars. On June 1st, staff will be requesting formal approval of fiscal year 2021 human services funding and a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2019-20, or our current HUD annual action plan, which would approve the ESG COVID money and the reallocation of existing CDBG funding for the new program, which I will be presenting to you today. Over the past several months, city council has been provided with information on the CARES funding that the city has received and the programs and services that are being provided to the community to address the impact of the COVID pandemic. Staff have heard and understood that homeless prevention, specifically eviction prevention, is one of council's priorities. In response, staff has identified existing 2019-20 CDBG funding in the amount of $600,000 that is not currently allocated or under contract. This funding is not part of the award to agencies for the upcoming fiscal year or from the CARES Act. Staff is seeking direction on the approval of reallocating these dollars to provide emergency rent and mortgage assistance for Mesa residents who are financially impacted by COVID. These funds are included in the substantial amendment that will be coming before city council for approval on June 1st. So, I'd like to provide a little bit of detail about the proposed program that we have and would also offer Mary to jump in at any point. The eviction and foreclosure prevention program will provide rent or mortgage assistance up to 90 days to income-eligible Mesa residents who have been financially impacted by COVID, such as a reduction in hours or decrease in income. Currently, there are no programs offered by other partners for mortgage assistance specifically. Assistance will be provided in the form of a grant to pay for arrears beginning April 1st or for the current month and one subsequent month, not to exceed 90 days. This assistance is a one-time assistance. Staff are proposing to assist approximately 120 households with this funding and has developed a referral process with our community nonprofit agencies. This community collaboration will better assist Mesa residents in navigating and applying for the needed services. The eviction and foreclosure prevention program supplements existing funding the city has awarded and distributed to nonprofit partners for similar programs and services, such as Mesa Care Dollars and the annual CDBG and ESG funding. The city has provided over $5 million to support critical programs, including homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, medium and long-term rental assistance, emergency rent and utility assistance. And reallocating the $600,000 in existing CDBG dollars will address a critical need in the community by providing rent and mortgage assistance to Mesa residents. This furthers homeless prevention. During the development of this program, staff reached out to the city's nonprofit partners regarding the proposed administration of the program. With the influx of additional CARES funding allocated to many of the nonprofits, they indicated they are currently at capacity and support the city's administration of the program. And staff look forward to collaborating with the nonprofit partners in making program referrals. The reallocation of existing CDBG funds to this program will complement the programs and services funded by Mesa Care's dollars. City staff are experienced in the administration of similar federal programs, for example, the tenant-based rental assistance program through Home Dollars. With the city administration of this program, we will have the opportunity to serve both individuals and families, as many of the other programs serve either singles or families. Additionally, with this funding, we will have the flexibility to assist low to moderate-income persons, as opposed to some of the other funding available that is limited to extremely low-income folks. As far as the next steps, we are here today to present this program and have city council approval. Once we have approval, we will be doing program marketing, and this will be intentional marketing through our nonprofits for, as I mentioned, on a referral basis. And then we will begin accepting applications and eligibility for the program, and assistance will then be provided to those applicants that are eligible. And if there are any questions, I would be happy to entertain those.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Michelle. Good presentation. My question is, when does it kick off and what is the qualifying, or how will the nonprofits qualify or quantify who is allowed to receive assistance?
Mayor, Councilman Thompson? So, the program kickoff is going to be June 2nd, so the applications will be available as of June 2nd. We are planning on having those available for two weeks and then evaluate where we are as far as the number received and the funding we have available. As far as the nonprofit referrals, if an individual or family comes to their program and they're not eligible for their assistance, for example, if it's an individual and they're applying for a program that only assists families and their income fits within the guidelines for our program, they would be referred to us to complete an application and be reviewed for eligibility.
Well, I guess, you know, for those that, let's say, for example, those that are on their last leg right now... their last leg right now, where they've already got assistance with paying this month's mortgage or rent, and then rolling into next month is the, if we wait until the 15th and then determine after that who is eligible, does that really put the stress on the individual as far as, you know, getting their, getting funding so that they can pay their June mortgage or lease? Because I'm guessing we're not gonna, you know, the check wouldn't be cut like overnight. And so I'm concerned that those that are really needing the funding won't get the funding until sometime in July, after the fact that their, that their June rent or mortgage may have already been due, and now they're past due.
Mayor and Councilmember Thompson, this is Mary. We have been working with the landlords with our security deposit program, and this is very similar to that. What we will do is we are going to push these applications through quickly, as long as we have all documentation to prove eligibility. Once we have eligibility, we process for payment quickly. We try to do it within that day or the following day. We send a letter of intent to the landlord or the mortgage company, saying that we guarantee that we will pay this amount of money on behalf of this family, and they sign it and send it back with the W-9 so we can process payment. We find that we can usually have payment out no later than 10 days from the time they're found eligible for the program.
And so would they, who will they be going through? Will it be our usual suspects like New Leaf, Mesa Can, United Way, and so forth?
Counsel Thompson, I think that's what you mentioned at the beginning, is we've visited with both of those agencies about this program, because we first went to them and say, said, "We have $600,000 that has this kind of guidance on it. Would you be willing to, could you administer another $600,000 on top of what you've already received?" New, or sorry, Save the Family received 800,000?
300,000.
300,000, sorry. Recently, they're actively, they're focused on, they can only, their program really is focused on families within a certain income. So they wanted to continue to retain that, doing that program, and they were satisfied with what they had. And so if someone comes to them and doesn't meet their guidelines, their requirements, then they'll refer them back to the city staff who administered the program. Same thing with Mesa Can. They have dollars that they've received from different sources, federal dollars from the county and others. So they have a pot of dollars. But if they reach, and most likely, I think there's this very low-income assistance is what they focus on, which is great. But if they have someone who comes to them who is making more money than, that's outside of their income, that's higher than the income that they could help, then they can, they know now to refer those individuals to us. So we're trying to work with all the agencies, because everybody kind of has their, by the funding source kind of dictates their customers and who they clientele, who they can help. And so we think this is an interesting program, because it allows us to help income, families and individuals, and at income that's a little bit higher than those other agencies. So they'll be, we'll use them to refer individuals to us, to make sure we can reach out into the community to provide that assistance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Michelle, for that presentation. So we're going to be working with our city partners relative to providing funding to many of our residents. So we're looking at, are we looking at a New Leaf, Save the Family, those agencies?
Mayor, Council. So the city will be administering the program directly to the residents. So they will have, residents will have the opportunity to apply for the program online, or if they are referred from another nonprofit agency for a program that they don't qualify there, they will be referred directly to the city, and we will provide assistance if they are eligible for the program. So this funding is not being allocated or provided to any nonprofit directly. This is going to be direct assistance that's going to be provided either to the landlord or the mortgage company on behalf of the applicant.
So Mayor and Council, this is going to be, what the difference is, to your point, we are administering this program. We'll be cutting the checks. What we were trying to emphasize is, we're really trying, and we've got great partners, so that's what makes this work, is with New Leaf and Save the Family, the largest ones, is we're trying to create a system so that when an individual comes into the system and has, and is looking for assistance, we want them to feel like, we don't want it to be too difficult for them to get referred to the right agency for assistance. And we're providing another resource that provides funding that is not provided by Save the Family or Mesa Can. So we're, but we want to get, we're using them to help give us referrals. If Save the Family, again, if we were to provide this funding to them, they would be limited on only helping low-income families. And we know that there are sometimes individuals and others. So we, that's why we've kept this separated, and Save the Family understands that, they support this, because they understand that we need to have another leg of the stool to provide assistance in our community, and for another income level that's higher than what Mesa Can can assist with. So that's, we're trying to be part of this community of assistance with their partnership. We've gone to each one of them and talked to them about, do they have the capacity, the interest to take on these additional dollars, and or how would they, or would they have the city administer it? And as of this week, they've all indicated they, they feel like the funding that they're getting right now from either the city or the county, other sources, is keeping them at maximum capacity for their staffing and their distribution of dollars. So that's why we've decided to take this on in-house, like we're doing with the business assistance program. We're going to keep this one in-house and administer, but we've done this before.
Great. And if you could just, are you working with them to let, for example, Mesa United Way, all these agencies know that this is available? Should a resident want, go to their agency, asking for support, that they can direct them to the city of Mesa, which have these dollars available to them?
Yes, sir. That's a very important part of this. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor, Michelle, and Mary, about the presentation. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
So my question is, I think in your presentation, you said you'd be able to assist 120 families. Was that part of the presentation?
That's an estimate, yes.
Estimate. So I'm just curious, are you going to be able to help more families than that? I mean, how did you come up with 120?
I should talk about that.
This is Mary, Councilmember Freeman and Mayor. We just did an estimate. If average rent or mortgage was $1,500 a month, and we could help up to 90 days, that's $4,500. So we just did $5,000 per family, and with 600,000, that's 120 families. If we pay less, absolutely, we'll be able to assist more with that. And just one point to mention is, this is the only program in Mesa that will assist with mortgage. And so it's not only the eviction prevention, it's also foreclosure prevention for those that have mortgage as well.
Are there going to be any other wraparound services provided? I mean, if we assist these families or individuals, can they then be referred to, help them be financially reliant at that point, or that's not going to be in our wheelhouse?
Well, we certainly can refer them to what we're doing with the food assistance program right now, if that's, if that's needed, as well as the utility. I mean, if they're having challenges paying their mortgage or their rent, they, we'll probably have to, we'll ask and see how they're doing with their utilities, and if they need food. So we can, we will certainly have those conversations with them.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question. I appreciate that.
Thank you. You know, I just want to note that I really appreciate staff being very nimble, again, to use that word, in addressing rental assistance. I think it was Mr. Vareti that last week was asking what more we could do on the topic of rental assistance, because in our, in the CARES Act funding that we're, I think we're doing a lot of good work with, it was noted that that's, rental assistance really isn't in the scope of what that, those funds are to be used for. So for staff to be creative and to look at the CDBG bucket of money as a way that, you know, during this financial crisis, we can offer rental assistance, I think is, is, I just want to point out that that's being creative and being responsive to the needs of the community right now. This, as you noted, this is a little bit of a deviation from us. We typically aren't in the business of, I mean, we typically work through agencies to do rental assistance, and we've, and that's good and bad. I mean, I think we've heard that sometimes there's some complaints that, you know, there's, you go in the wrong door, or there's a little bit of a runaround. And so I, I like the fact that there's no wrong doors in this situation. The city is an easy organization to track down and to get someone to answer the phone, and when you're in trouble, you know, to get some assistance. So I just want to compliment the staff for stepping up, finding money that wasn't obvious, finding money that was outside of what we were doing, you know, in the last few weeks, and being a part of the solution here. I know, right now, there's a stay on evictions and on RITS being executed and people being forced to leave their homes, but that's not going to be the case for much longer. And so this, this will allow us to address some of the underlying financial obligations those folks have. And I think we've been saying for a couple of months now, that one of the priorities of this council is to do all that we can to avoid homelessness, to keep people in their homes, so that we're not dealing with them and on the streets. So I just want to add my support to this. Councilmember Duff?
Yes, thank you. I'm very supportive and thank the city and all the staff for all the work they've done in figuring out how to best serve our citizens. I do have a question on mortgage assistance. What is the federal, the federally backed loans, are they allowed to foreclose? I thought that that, where there was a moratorium on any foreclosures if it's a federally backed loan. And if, if that is the case, then can we spread those dollars out to those others that aren't federally backed? I don't know. I just had considerations of, are we expending money for our mortgage payments in a condition where the mortgage payments are really just tagged on and to the end of the loan, which is often, you know, 20 or 30 years? And that our dollars are really keeping those people in their homes, and as many people as possible. And if we, if there is protection under the federally backed mortgages, that can we use it elsewhere to keep more people in their homes, whether it's rental or mortgage?
I, Michelle, do you have, oh, Michelle's going to answer that question, because that's way above my head. Go ahead, Michelle.
It's a little bit above mine, but I'm going to do my best. Councilmember Duff, Mayor, Council. For any of those loans that are federally backed, and they do have a current moratorium, I know that for evictions, it's been extended here in Arizona till the 15th of July, but I'm not exactly sure what that date is for the moratorium on the loans. However, we would require some type of proof, either from the lender or a statement that shows what the applicant is in arrears. So if at that point, they have a moratorium and they're not being affected, we would not provide assistance, and therefore, we would be able to assist other individuals.
Great. That would be wonderful. So we can stretch those dollars as much as possible, and maybe if you could just reach out, and so we have some clarification on what the federal guidelines are on federally backed mortgages for residents.
Absolutely. We will look into that and get back to Mayor and Council.
Great. Thank you very much, Council. Other questions or comments on this item? All right. I can, I can tell by the expressions of support that the direction that you're, if you are looking for some, is we appreciate the city staff and being creative and finding this CDBG money to be used during the financial crisis that we're experiencing, and appreciate that you're also taking on a task that you haven't traditionally done. So our compliments, and thank you.
Thank you very much for your support, Mayor and Council.
You bet. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, Council, is item 2B, that is to hear a presentation and discuss and provide direction on an update on the Mesa CARES program, focusing on the Mesa CARES Small Business Assistance Reemergence Program. Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Today, our real focus here is on moving into the technical assistance program and the marketing program that we're rolling out. So Jay's here to begin providing more information on that program to you today. Jay?
Thank you. Just as soon as I get this up here. There we go. All right. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Nice to be with you again today. I'm Jay O'Donnell. I'm the Assistant Economic Development Director here at the city of Mesa. I'm going to present to you an update on the Small Business Reemergence Program. If you recall, this is a three-pronged approach, or a phased approach. We have the Mesa CARES Grant Program, the Mesa CARES Technical Assistance Program, which I'll give you an overview and a process overview today, as well as a Mesa CARES Marketing Program, and I'll hit that at a high level today as well. The Financial Assistance Grant Program update includes, just a reminder, the applications were open on May 11th. They closed this last Sunday, the 24th, at 5:00 PM. The program was promoted heavily by the city of Mesa, the Mesa Chamber of Commerce, the Asian Chamber of Commerce, the East Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and Real Mesa. Those were our formal partners in the promotion of this program, but many other outlets certainly helped us get the word out. I have 1,800 requested, but actually, the number updated just this morning, we had 2,600 people request the application online, and more than 1,800 actually started to fill out the application. So applications are currently being processed and verified, and I am excited to be able to share the results and recommendations next week at study session. So the numbers at that point will be complete. We'll have a recommendation on awards, and we can go through the details at that time. I'm most excited to present the next phase of the Small Business Reemergence Program, and that is the Technical Assistance Program. This is a program that provides education, training, and services to Mesa-based businesses, covering a wide variety of topics and support. Assistance will be provided in formats including webinars, live Q&amp;A sessions, and one-on-one business counseling, free of charge to participating businesses. The training, education, and services will be provided by subject matter experts, and the city of Mesa will partner with local nonprofits specializing in helping small businesses in various categories. There is currently an RFP process underway to select those vendors. And we also plan to provide some of the classes and services in multiple languages. So the technical assistance demand was actually great. We had nearly half of the financial assistance grant applicants express a desire for technical assistance, and we've categorized the topics under general business, which includes business planning and coaching, marketing, human resources, finance, accounting, and budgeting, information technology such as cybersecurity, e-commerce and web development, and organizational development, human resource planning as well. So if you look at the most requested categories, we had more than 250 people request marketing, design, advertising services, and just about 200 request web hosting, website design and development, which is actually a good sign, because many of the businesses that we are assisting with the grant program did not have websites, or if they did have a web presence, it was minimal and fairly out of date, and they need to be refreshed, and they need to have an e-commerce model. Signage was also requested heavily. They need new signage, and health and safety-related signage for the exterior of their facilities and the interior of their facilities, so that they can provide flow patterns and interior of their facilities so that they can provide flow patterns and, and other postings for signage and directions when people enter the business. Business planning and coaching was also requested, e-commerce, financial planning and accounting. So we're pleased to offer a number of services. These were just the most requested. And we do believe that the technical assistance will actually have the biggest impact on these small businesses. That the grant program was a wonderful opportunity, but providing these fundamental tools and training will be longer lasting and have a more profound effect on the health of the business overall. Applications for the Technical Assistance Program will open Monday, June 8. The Technical Assistance Program is expanded much more than the Financial Assistance Program. So it's more inclusive, certainly more broad-based, and we have simplified the application process as well. So you still must be a business located in the City of Mesa. But if you received SBA funding through the CARES Act, either the PPP or EIDL or other CARES Act funding, you are eligible for technical assistance. Home-based businesses are also eligible. They were not in the, the financial grant program. So the documentation is still required for verification, but it is also simplified. We're still requiring a W-9 and a minimum of one additional document. And those, that can be a TPT license, your last submitted tax return, or a utilities account with the name of the business and the address on the application. And when businesses fill out their application, they will be asked to rank their priorities for assistance. So what they really feel they need most and what they can, they can handle, because certainly, we want to make sure that they get their top choices met for services and, and deliverables. Promotion of this program begins next week. And the proposals that we're working with for the technical assistance providers will be negotiated and finalized next week as well. So we're in, as I mentioned, we're in that process now. The businesses can apply online. We have a unique URL, mesaaz.gov/caresbiztechassist. So the guidelines and requirements are available now online. The applications will remain open until all funds are deployed. So unlike the Financial Grant Assistance Program, there is not a hard deadline on the technical assistance. And we do believe that we'll be able to serve more businesses over time, especially into the fall. And some of the responses that we received to the RFP include a series of classes. So you can actually, as a business, build on your, your training over time. And I think that's really important to be able to extend that service through the end of December of this year. So once they've submitted their, their application and their forms are verified, the applicants will receive confirmation of their request and a draft training or service plan within five to 10 days. And the investment for this program is $1.5 million. As I mentioned, information's available now. We also have the CARES Call Center staff working Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM to answer any questions. I also wanted to give you a quick preview of the final phase of the reemergence program, and that is our marketing program that will target locals and visitors. The highlights for the local marketing program include an integrated marketing campaign to promote those industries most affected by the pandemic, including retail, restaurants, tourism, and others. It will include partnerships and promotional opportunities that are under consideration with the goal of driving consumers to buy now and visit now if they're comfortable or as soon as the consumer is ready. The campaign will promote Mesa businesses and also encourage those businesses to provide compelling offers to incentivize people to come in. The marketing will run through the end of the calendar year, and the budget for this is $250,000. As you know, tourism was hit, was the first industry hit by the pandemic, and it was hit the hardest. So concentrating some of the CARES funding on accelerating the recovery of the visitor industry is key. This particular pillar of the program would be executed by Visit Mesa, the city's destination marketing organization. And it would include a campaign called Escape to Mesa, directed to drive markets, including Arizona, Utah, New Mexico, Colorado, Texas, and California, and also advertising regionally to promote staycations and weekend-themed packages like Weekend Warrior or Couples Retreat. The interesting thing that I think they have done a nice job including is, if you do book a two-night stay, you would receive $150 in vouchers to Mesa-based businesses, including restaurants, retail, attractions, and more. And the good news is, as we look at the data coming in about what travelers are looking for now and into the, the near term, they, the City of Mesa has the product that aligns with what travelers are looking for in a vacation. So the Paid and Earn Media Campaign will run July through December of 2020, and the proposed budget is $181,000 for that. So we believe these plans, together, the Small Business Financial Grant Program, the Technical Assistance, and the Marketing Program targeted toward locals and visitors, will really help businesses recover more quickly and eventually become stronger. Happy to answer any questions or hear discussion at this time.
Thank you very much, Jay. Great, great presentation, great roadmap for what's ahead. Mr. Luna.
Hey, Jay. Thank you for working with Visit Mesa to get this program launched. I spoke to Mark Thompson. He told me that approximately $14 million in lost revenues, $1 million in bed tax for losses in Mesa during that pandemic, which affected certainly the City of Mesa. And they only have figures until May, until May 2. That's been reported. So it's been a very significant loss, a real, a real burden on our economy. And so these kind of activities are certainly going to benefit the City of Mesa, hopefully cultivate some more travelers coming into the area, as well as encouraging our, our local residents to do staycations and those kind of activities. We certainly encourage you to do this, and I appreciate that you're working in partnership with Visit Mesa, because we want to make sure that we bring visitors into the area, as well as encourage our residents to take advantage, staycations, if you will, and really, really boost the economy as we move forward. So thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Mr. Freeman, and then Ms. Duff.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I can echo Councilmember Luna's thoughts. I, I support Visit Mesa. And I think this is, I'll use the word creative because I don't know of another word for it, to help stimulate the economic portion for our visitors coming to Mesa and remind them, we're here. We have a great city and a lot of great attractions here. So with that, I almost thought, is this enough funding for the program? Is there any chance, Jay, that you have, we will have to increase any more funding for this program? Or is that, is this it?
Mr. Freeman, Councilor, if Jay comes to the city manager, and that's nicely, I'm sure we can find some more funding. We're actually looking at, Jay and I are having some conversations yesterday about some additional marketing programs that maybe focus on, what do you want to call them, the activity centers, economic activity centers in the city. So having a, we focused, this one presentation talked about tourism, but we've also talked about maybe having a specific focus in different markets in the city, whether it's the Falcon Field District, whether it's downtown, whether it's the Gateway Area. And we've got, you know, we can go on a map and we can see the economic activity centers in the city. And thought, maybe what we could also do is do a marketing plan or some kind of promotion for those specific activity centers around the city. We just didn't have time to really refine that idea, but we, give us some chance to do that. And I think some of these proposals, we still, we still could find some additional funding to either increase the funding for the tourism side, or maybe also look at expanding into different types of markets within the city that have also been impacted.
Thank you. That answers my question. I just, I like the word nimble. So let's, let's keep it going.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff.
Yes, I'm so glad to see that we're recognizing our need for marketing and how that is so critical for all our businesses, long-term, to become more resilient, and our city as well, since we depend on those sales tax dollars more than anything else in running our city. I'd like to suggest even more marketing dollars. I think this is an opportunity to incorporate our city as a brand also. While we're doing these marketing efforts in the villages and the different places that we have, to market our city overall, we've always lacked that identity, a sense of place. And if we can incorporate that or maybe bump up the dollars in order to have that, this is an opportunity to do something we've been wanting to do for a long time and never had the opportunity. And it does feed into our business resilience, is to look at who we are and putting our place on the map, regionally, nationally. I know that might sound too big, but while we're looking at marketing, let's incorporate some of those ideas so we can make some movement in that direction so that we can help our city long-term. And then my other question was back into the technical assistance. How are we addressing the businesses? And do they have a limited expenditure of services? Or it's ongoing? Is it a number of hours? I'm just wondering how our...
Mayor and Councilmember Duff, that is a great question. And we are working on how to structure that now. It really will depend on what the business needs and how much service they need or request. There will be a number of businesses that can probably be helped with attending webinars. And the way we're structuring the webinars are really open to a number of businesses. So one of our providers had submitted a response that would allow up to 500 businesses to participate in a webinar. And, and once the webinar is paid for, the way we have packaged our scope, it really is, we own it. So the city owns it. So we might be able to serve 500 COVID-affected businesses now, but we can have that in our inventory later. So, and that wouldn't necessarily be a, a charge against the business per se. But say, for example, a business may need a website. They've never had a website. They have a difficult time developing one on their, on their own. So a, one of our vendors could help them set up a website. That, that dollar value of service that they receive would have to be limited. We don't know yet exactly where that might land, but it might be $2,500 tops. And then they might not be able to receive any other services, but they could still attend the webinars that are free.
That's great. I'm glad we're using a combination of both because a lot of the information can be taught, like you said, in a larger online platform, some very basics. And then we, if we can have that follow-up support that addresses their specific issues, their specific business, to help them get past the obstacles to creating that online marketing, which is so necessary, not only for this economy, but for the 21st century. To be a resilient business, you have to be digital. So thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Redia.
Yeah. Hi, Jay. Thank you for that information. Just a quick question on the coordination of, once you do select the, the folks working on this, i- is this going to be like a committee that meets regularly just to limit maybe duplication? Or just a thought of how do you coordinate these activities so that we maximize reach with individuals and kind of capitalize on, on what we're doing and get strong, give small businesses the opportunities, get stronger sooner than later?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Redia. We are still working on how exactly we're going to implement the program. And I think what will happen, as the companies come in, they will go through an intake process, and we'll, we'll have them assigned essentially a case manager. And we have case managers who are going to be working out of our Economic Development Office, as well as our Downtown Transformation Office, to manage those cases. And they will be referred out to different vendors based on their needs and what we're having them, you know, as far as providing services. Once they get started, then we'll need to track, along with the vendor, how their service is going, what they're, what they're doing in terms of expenditures, and then tie that all back together. There will be an evaluation form that the, the client fills out at the end about the service that they did receive, or the webinar that they did attend, what they thought, you know, what did, what did they get out of it? Did they feel like they improved their knowledge and their capacity for business development or business understanding? In terms of then being able to kind of wrap other services around it, they, I would anticipate, the company working through whatever vendor may be introduced at that time to other services that the vendor can provide as well. So it's not just a one-and-done, if you will. It's, it's service that they will hopefully be introduced to and be provided long-term. The other thing we're going to do is have a website and a portal that will list all of the webinars that are available to the participants in this program. And they just will need to have a login number, and they can go in and watch any of the webinars. So that, I think, will also be helpful. They can, you know, learn as, as they go, and they can learn on their own time, too. And some of what we're finding with the grant applicants so far is that some are very new to business or not, not terribly sophisticated. And so they're going to need a lot more help and a lot more service, where others are a little more advanced. They've, they've been in business for several years. They understand a little bit about online marketing, but they could fine-tune some of the skills that they have. I hope that answered your question.
Perfect. Yeah, no, thank you. Appreciate it. And you also mentioned in different languages, what were the languages, languages that we're thinking providing services?
Mayor, Councilmember Redia, thank you for the question. Definitely Spanish. We have had a couple of proposals that addressed Spanish specifically for certain classes. We also anticipate that some of the webinars can be translated and have the subtext run across the bottom in perhaps Mandarin or Chinese, excuse me, and Vietnamese as well. We did have Chinese available for the grant assistance application, Spanish, and Vietnamese. We had a few submitted in Spanish and one submitted in Vietnamese, but we didn't have any submission, submissions in Chinese. And I, I have a feeling that some of those businesses may have read the application in Chinese, but filled it out on the English form.
Okay. Thank you. Council, other questions? Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, just going back real quick. I just want to make sure that, that when we talk about marketing, this is strictly marketing of the businesses themselves, correct? Because I was under the understanding that we couldn't market the City of Mesa per se with any of the Mesa Cares, well, Mesa Cares or the CARES Act dollars. Is that correct, Jim?
Mayor and Councilmember Thompson, I'm not aware of that limitation.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think we should, we should use it for sure to help market the businesses in Mesa. I was just wanting to make sure that we were staying within guidelines.
Yeah. No, so Mayor, Councilman Thompson, I think maybe the broader question is, and we have, and we are going to have to be careful where we head with this, but it, it does kind of have to show how was the business, you know, there has to be a link to COVID, right, and the impact of businesses, which I think is pretty apparent. When we're doing direct assistance to businesses that have impacted, that's pretty obvious. I think as we kind of get broader into this marketing, I think we're just going to have to be, we'll just have to keep that question in front of us. Because when an audit comes in, we just need to be able to justify that this was in response to the pandemic. Obviously, certain industries like tourism, which is obvious, were impacted. I think if we did, you know, a grocery store promotion, people would kind of maybe be a little more suspect. So I, I think that we'll have to take that into consideration as we develop this out.
Right. Yeah. And I, I agree with helping Visit Mesa and then with... and then with the businesses themselves helping integrate, you know, their marketing programs, you know, helping the businesses market themselves and providing that expertise or, or so forth. I was just concerned about using the funds, the COVID funds themselves to market the city of Mesa.
I, I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Duff.
Um, yes, thank you for that comment, Kevin. A good point. Um, I just want to say thank you to the entire Economic Development Team and the city staff and that support of this program. When it started with the grants and the technical assistance, I had some reservations, whether we had the wherewithal, the capacity and, and the expertise to pull off a program that was effective. And I had, the way it's being executed, the things that we're doing, I think it's very well done. I'm, I feel very fortunate to have such a team of people within the city to do this work. And so thank you for all your efforts. And I know you've worked long hours in getting it done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions, Counsel?
I got a question.
Yes, Mr. Whitaker.
Yeah, actually, I have more of a comment. And I think, you know, from my perspective, as I look at the economic numbers and you see that, I think now in this 10-week span, we've seen 40 million people file for unemployment in the last 10 weeks. And I want to be clear that I'm not anti-small business. I, I own multiple small businesses across the entire state. But I, I get a bit concerned when we're taking funds to go and help specific companies do things like build websites, right? I mean, like things that, that, in my opinion, if a business can't figure out how to build a website, and should the government be propping them up with dollars? I, I have issues with this. And, and it's not specifically the businesses that I have issues with, is that we don't know what's going to come economically, right? Like, there's still a lot of unknowns, and we have until December to spend these funds. So, so my concern is, you know, what happens if we get, you know, longer than these mile food lines that build up in some of our food donation facilities? People need basic necessities like food or, or shelter. So as we continue this talk about expanding these programs or spending money on Visit Mesa or some of these other things, those are all great ideas, but, you know, I, I think it should be shifted towards the, the end of the timeframe when we're allowed to spend these funds, you know, closer to the maybe December timeframe, if we notice that, hey, we've got a lot of excess money left over, and we need something to do with it, rather than trying to rapidly burn through these COVID funds. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing over in Economic Development, but I, I just want to say that I hope that we exercise some caution as it comes to burning through all these funds before, before we know the true impact before year's end of what's really going to happen in the situation. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jeremy. Well, I'll add, just add my support for this program. Jay, you and the folks that you've been working with have really stepped up in a big-time way, and it hasn't gone unnoticed. So thank you very much. But I, I appreciate the focus that the Mesa Cares Program has put on the economic reemergence priority that we have in our community. I think we are engaging more in that than a lot of other cities that have CARES Act money. And I think it's appropriate and appreciate it. The, the Technical Assistance Program, I, I'm becoming more and more comfortable with it. I was initially concerned that we might, this might become kind of a full employment act for, for business support groups. But, so I, I think it's important, and I appreciate all the points that Jay made a moment ago about talking about the quality of this program and the, the metrics that we're going to use to evaluate whether or not the participants in it are getting what they need. And so I appreciate that, Jay, just the, the focus on that we're doing this, you know, to specifically get good outcomes from the people that, that need the assistance, not to create a program. And, and that's not what's happening, and so I appreciate the focus on that. Also, the focus on helping Visit Mesa to help our hospitality industry, our entertainment industry, that have just been decimated. Everybody in our community, I think, has felt the economic impact of this economic downturn. So I, I think if we do things like value packages, vacation packages, things that will encourage economic activity in our city, also perhaps, you know, it gives the folks in our community an opportunity to experience some of these underutilized resources in our, in our community. I think that, that's great, and we'll pay dividends and, and a ripple effect throughout the community. So I like what I've heard. I think this is agendized really just to get an update and to provide direction. Given the comments I've heard from the council members and the thumbs up I'm seeing, again, Jay and Mr. Brady, thank you. This is a job well done again. And we look forward to getting your presentation next Thursday on the Small Business Grant Awards and taking action on that item next Thursday as well.
Mayor.
Anything to add, Counsel or, or staff on that?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. If not, the next item on our agenda, item three, that's to acknowledge receipt of minutes of boards and committees. Thank you, Mr. Luna, for making that motion, seconded by Mr. Freeman. We do need to do a roll call vote. Mr. Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Whitaker.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Redia.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Duff.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you, and I vote aye as well, so that passes unanimously. Item four on our agenda is a current event summary and reports on meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, I know I've seen you doing a lot this week. Mr. Luna, why don't we begin with you?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Busy week for me. Last Thursday, Councilmember Redia and I attended Halday Spanish Summit via Mesa Facebook en Español. We talked about the CARES Call Center, Mesa PD canned food drive, as well as Small Business Reemergence Program. On Tuesday, you and I participated in a conversation with the mayor of El Mosio. They asked for some guidance in terms of how they deal with the pandemic in El Mosio. And so we offered them some hints and some information on how the city of Mesa actively participated in working with our community as it relates to the pandemic. Yesterday, I attended an ASU workshop on the heat resilience program, along with Councilmember Duff. I'm sure she's, she'll speak more on that. It had to do with mobile home communities and to develop innovations and ideas to help reduce the issues that mobile homes have within the city of Mesa relative to, to the heat that they experience. I was also, I also participated in Mesa PD Virtual Multicultural Community Forum yesterday. Mesa PD presented on their support of our community during the pandemic and the changes they've made internally with their training and wellness program and recruitment and their everyday duties in terms of responding to the pandemic here in the city of Mesa. Great job, Ken Costa and his staff, Tara Hall. They do a wonderful job over there, so I appreciate all the things that they do for our community. And then yesterday evening, I attended the Falcon Field Community Tenant Meeting, provided updates on the community CARES and airport facility closure updates relative to the airport. The airport never closed, but there were some, some things that they, they did do relative to ensuring that our community was safe. They also talked about some great capital improvement projects. And stay tuned, they are going to put a new monument sign on my callops in Falcon Field Drive, and it should be operational a few months, and it'll be a nice monument sign indicating where our wonderful airport's located. So, so that's, that's it for right now.
Thank you, David. Counsel, who, others that would like to share? Ms., yes, Ms. Duff.
I thought I'd skip, but I can't do that, right? Thank you, Councilmember Luna, for recognizing the heat resilience workshop that we had on mobile homes yesterday. And I just wanted to bring one bit of information to light, and the workshop actually had experts from across the state, including the Corporation Commission. I'm looking at how we can address some of the issues unique to the mobile home parks and the heat. And one of the things I wanted to point out, especially in light of our heat warning that we have this weekend and the beginning of our summer extreme heat, is these mobile home parks, they have master utility accounts held by the property owner or manager. The individuals, the residents, do not have their own utility accounts. Therefore, they don't, cannot apply for utility assistance. Heat becomes a problem disproportionately, the number of deaths of heat-related illnesses in mobile home parks is like, as, I don't have to do the numbers, but it's, it's like 30% I mean, higher, even, I think it could be more than that in the mobile home parks. So given our COVID restrictions and staying inside, a lot of our public facilities closed, we do need to look at possible cooling stations or alternatives where people can go to seek refuge from the heat this summer. And otherwise, those heat-related deaths, especially in mobile home parks, will really go off the charts this summer. It's an issue that we'll look at, and I'll talk more about with our staff. So I just wanted to bring light to that since I had the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Counsel, other comments? All right, thank you. I, I'll just note that I was privileged to attend another canned food drive this week and look forward to, that was at Greenfield Park. I'm sure Mr. Brady will tell us where the one this Wednesday is going to be. Appreciated multiple other meetings with council members via Zoom, working on various issues. Thank you, Counsel, for staying so engaged and so busy during this important time in our community. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Mayor, we'll see you Monday. We'll have a few items to discuss, it sounds like, prior to the, as part of the study session, prior to the city council meeting. So we'll see you on Monday, probably about 5:15.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes the items on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna. Counsel, please unmute your microphones. We'll have a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.